Yes. Can everyone hear this? Yes. Check, check. Yes. 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 Can everyone hear? Okay, we will get started momentarily. Apparently, a lot of you don't have anything else to do but come to this meeting, which is great. It beats whatever's on TV, I can guarantee that. Okay, my name is Bob Marks, I am superintendent for Wasau and Bloomfield, and on behalf of the five schools here this evening, Bloomfield, Creighton, Plainview, Osmond, and Wasau, I would like to welcome everyone and thank you for taking time from your busy schedules to be a part of the second full board discussion for the five school study. This process started in the fall of 2013 approximately, collecting data and holding meetings with Mr. Jerry Eilers, a retired superintendent who has conducted several feasibility studies for numerous unifications, mergers, and consolidations across the state. Mr. Eilers presented the feasibility study for the five schools on January 26th at Plainview High School. After that, it was decided that each board would have a committee of three, and we would try to meet monthly, along with administrators, rotating between the five schools. In addition to these monthly committee meetings, subcommittees were developed, which covered the areas listed under item four on your agenda, and I don't know if everyone has an agenda, or you may need to share with somebody. I absolutely didn't know how many to make, so I probably ran short. This is a very abbreviated version of what has brought us to this evening. On behalf of the five schools, I would like to thank our guest speakers and those that accompanied them for being part of this meeting. In the interest of time, I would like to conclude by asking you to observe the following: Discussion about topics brought up by board members directed to our guest speakers or between other board members does not include audience input. There will be a short intermission after the presentations by Dr. Chips and Dr. Epler, and then we will conclude with Mr. Schultz's presentation. His is the longest, and he will entertain questions which are specific to his presentation. Thank you for your cooperation. And now it is my pleasure to introduce our guest moderator, Marcia Herring, from the Nebraska Association of School Boards. Marcia will conduct the rest of this meeting. Marcia joined the Nebraska Association of School Boards in 2004 after nearly seven years as a search consultant for the association. Since coming to the NASB, she has served local school boards through the facilitation of hiring the key educational leaders of the district, as well as the development of best practices, practice resources to support board members and superintendents. She currently serves as the Director of Board Development, working with boards and administrators in order to collaborate, as well as develop a shared vision of education with stakeholders to support growth and improve student learning. With that, I would like to introduce Marcia Herring.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. I've traveled the state, the state is my territory, and I primarily work with boards of education. Consolidation, unification, sharing services is a topic that is widespread across the state of Nebraska. What's so important is that we keep our focus on what we're here for, and that's for the kids. And this is tremendous, that there's this many people in the five communities that felt so passionately and interested in being here this evening to hear the presentations. We do have an agenda, we are going to stay close to that agenda and keep this right on. We have a lot of information to be presented to you. So I want to begin by introducing to you the speakers that we have before us, and the experts that have come to the table this evening include Dr. Corey Epler, who is the Deputy State Director for Nebraska Career Education with the Department of Education. Originally from Kansas, Dr. Epler's experiences include being a classroom teacher, developing and facilitating leadership training for youth and adult audiences, as well as curriculum design and development for both for-profit and nonprofit organizations. He holds a bachelor's degree, a master's degree from Kansas State University, and he received his PhD from Virginia Tech prior to beginning his work with the Nebraska Department of Education. Dr. Epler taught high school agro-science for seven years at Arkansas City, Kansas. Dr. Epler. Next, we have the opportunity to hear from Dr. Michael Chips. He is the President of Northeast Community College in Nebraska, the 20-county northeast prior to leading northeast. Dr. Chips served as President for the Mid Plains Community College in Nebraska from 2003 to 2012. Previously, he served as Vice President and Chief Executive Officer of North Flat Community College in Nebraska, and for 23 years held multiple instructional student affairs and administrative positions at Central Community College in Nebraska. Dr. Chips holds a Doctorate of Philosophy degree from the University of Nebraska at Lincoln in Educational Administration, Curriculum, and Instruction, with a specialization in management of colleges and universities, a counseling internship at the Nebraska Psychiatric Institute at the University of Nebraska Medical Center in Omaha, a Master of Science in Education degree with a specialization in counseling from the University of Nebraska at Carney. And he also holds a Bachelor of Science in Education degree with a major in sociology and a minor in psychology from the University of Nebraska at Carney. Dr. Chips also served 21 years in the United States Army Reserve and retired as a major in 1995. Dr. Chips. And finally, we have the privilege of closing our evening with comments from the attorney representing the five schools, Rex Schultz. He is an attorney in Lincoln, Nebraska, focusing his practice on representation of public school districts throughout the state of Nebraska. Rex graduated from Carney State College, now the University of Nebraska at Carney, in 1974. He taught history and coached at Omaha Bryant High School in Omaha, and that was from 1974 through 1978. He then enrolled in the University of Nebraska School of Law, graduating in 1981. Rex has been an attorney with the firm of Perry, Guthrie, Haas, and Gessford for the past 33 years. Rex has written extensively on school issues, including several law review articles, and has made statewide and national presentations on legal topics. Rex was a volunteer for nearly two years in schools, working with classroom teachers as a mentor for elementary students, and was a leader in establishing the High School Mock Trial Project in Nebraska. Rex has also served as a member of the Lincoln and Nebraska Bar Associations, serving as President of the Lincoln Bar Association and a member of the House of Delegates of the Nebraska Bar Association. Rex Schultz. With that, we now need to turn it over to our boards to officially open their meetings.
Yes.
Osman.
Since we do have a quorum of the board, it is their responsibility to do so, and we
Osman will now call the meeting to order at 7:00 and verify publication in the 11/5
will begin with the Wasau Board.
Good evening.
issue of the Osman Republican.
We'll call the meeting to order for the Board of Education for Wasau Public Schools at
Roll call, Ed Brummels.
Yes.
Cheryl Frederick, yes.
Kent Gansbaum.
7:00 this evening.
Yes.
Martin Moes.
As required by state statute, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is present in the front
Yes.
Michelle Rakowski.
Yes.
Jennifer Wingert.
Yes.
And we need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
lobby.
So moved.
All members of our board are present.
Ed, and a vote, Ed Brummels.
Yes.
I need a motion to approve our agenda.
Cheryl Frederick, yes.
Kent Gansbaum.
Chad, second.
Yes.
Russ, roll call vote.
Martin Moes.
Chad, Vines.
Yes.
Yes.
Michelle Rakowski.
Terry Johnson.
Yes.
Yes.
Jennifer Wingert.
Terry Nelson.
Thank you.
Yes.
And finally, the Plainview Board, please.
Mark Dawson.
Yes.
Russ Kaler.
Good evening, everyone.
Yes.
Thanks for coming.
Darren Vines, yes.
We'll open this meeting of the Plainview Public School Board of Education by roll call,
Thank you. Bloomfield Community School.
The meeting of the Board of Education District 54-0586, Bloomfield Community Schools
Marilyn.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Vicki.
will come to order.
Here.
A copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the lobby.
Bob.
Here.
Alden.
Here.
All legal requirements have been met, and all board members have been properly notified.
And myself, here. The open meetings is out in the hallway, posted. Need a motion to accept the agenda.
Yes.
The President will declare the meeting open.
Okay, and in a second.
Yes.
It's been moved by Mike, seconded by Vicki, roll call, Marilyn.
I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I submit.
Motion by Keith Kirchhoff.
Say it.
Second by Brian Eisenhour.
Yes.
Roll call, Keith.
Mike.
Yes.
Yes.
Brian.
Bob.
Yes.
Yes.
Kristi.
Vicki.
Yes.
Yes.
Kristi.
Alden.
Yes.
Yes.
And Jason, yes.
Myself, yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And Creighton Public Schools. And now we will begin the Subcommittee Reports, starting with the Curriculum and Instruction,
Creighton Public Schools will now call their meeting to order with roll call.
Mark.
please.
Yes.
Thank you, Marcia. The Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee met on September 24th, 2014, at Wasau High School. We gave our Subcommittee Report at the last Five-School Study Subcommittee meeting. Since then, we have not met, so we don't have anything for that to offer than what was at the previous meeting. We do have, we have handed handouts of what was put on the previous meeting to all board members, and right now, that is where we are at with Curriculum Instruction.
Legal.
Sorry. The Legal Committee met in committee form with as many of the five school, three board committee members in Pringles in October, and prior to that, we had Rex Schultz as our legal counsel, all board members of our boards approved that, and at that time, we decided that we needed to have a five-school board meeting and have Mr. Schultz back again because of the magnitude of his presentation. And that's all I have for the legal.
Thank you. Architecture.
The Architecture Committee has met twice. The first one was prior to the last committee meeting, so it was reported on. Met a second meeting on October 22nd. Basically, the Architecture Committee at each of those had met with, in a real informal basis, with an architecture firm. At the last one, we met with the DLR Group, and asked that they give a real informal presentation about just, you know, what they could offer, if this goes to a building project, what they foresaw as things that they would offer, that they would provide, and things that they would do. They talked about a seven-step process. One of the things that they talked about, that their particular group has their own engineers, designers, architects, et cetera, where the other architecture firm we had visited with do not have those people in-house, but they do work with specific groups of each of those. Some of the things that they would offer, they would include a facility analysis of existing buildings at each of the respective five communities. They would look at a concept of planning for the initial enrollment, and then, in case of declining enrollments, they would do a site evaluation for a facility. Approximate cost they gave was around $150, $155 per square foot for regular classroom space, making sure we understood that there are rooms that we require possibly more than that. They talked about the possible addition of allowing for a storm shelter that could be worked into locker rooms, wrestling room space, that type of thing. And then they suggested the possibility of some visits to some communities for our, one of our committees, our investigative committee, that had gone through some building processes, and they talked about Oak and Craig Elementary, Sioux City, the career education facility, Bishop Healan, Fine Arts Facility in Sioux City, and the Sioux Falls Career and Technical Education Vocational High School. The Architecture Committee is also planning on meeting informally with a couple of other architecture firms in not-too-distant future.
Great. Thank you very much. Investigative Committee?
The Investigative Committee has met twice now, once on August 25th and once on September 24th. The very first meeting was fairly informal. We looked at Mr. Ham from Osmond contacting the NASB for a list of schools that have had, that has had successful or failed consolidation attempts within the past 10 years. Once he did that, we were going to look at possibly contacting those schools and to see what their processes were as far as getting the community involved, if a survey was sent out. Once information was gathered and sorted, then we were going to look at doing a possible survey as a whole from our investigative committee. With the second meeting, we did put together a possible survey that will be sent out possibly. We also have contacted representatives from Laurel Concord, Coleridge School, Riverside School, which is Cedar Rapids and Spalding, and Johnson County Central School, which is Tecumseh and Niemaha Valley. Those schools will all be meeting with the Investigative Committee next week on November 20th to go over different things that they went through as far as consolidating their There were also different questions that we came up with that, at that time, we're going to ask those schools in order to help us develop a survey and get more information out to the public in regards to consolidation.
Thank you. We'll receive our final committee report from the Economic and Labor.
I do not actually serve on the economic. Mr. Jensen could not be here this evening and asked that I step in his stead, so the purpose of the Five-School Economic Committee is to explore the economic impact of a five-school consolidation and identify opportunities for stimulating growth in the communities of the five-school area. The Five-School Economic Committee will work with local economic groups to identify workforce training and community development needs and possible implications that may arise from a school merger. The Five-School Economic Committee will explore opportunities for the school districts individually or as a merged district to strengthen relationships with higher education to provide students with an enhanced career education. The Five-School Economic Committee will work with regional businesses to identify employer needs for a job-ready workforce. The Five-School Economic Committee will explore opportunities for multiple career pathways designed to meet student and workforce needs in the region. These opportunities may include access to higher education and training for non-traditional students in the communities served. Some of the other information he asked me to share, I believe Dr. Epler is going to be sharing it in his presentation, the committee, or the Subcommittee did gather some information. They were curious to see what percentage of the graduates, the recent graduates are presently living in the district, whether they've returned to it or whether they never left the district. And so, for the first decade of this century, from 2001 to 2010, at Bloomfield, there are currently 27% that have either returned, of the graduates that have either returned to and/or never left the district. At Creighton, that percentage was 20%, Osmond was 24%, Plainview 23.8%, and Wasau was 17.2%.
Thank you very much. We will move right into our guest speakers, and first inviting Dr. Corey Epler.
Well, first of all, I just want to say thanks for the opportunity to be here this evening, and talk to you a little bit about some of the exciting things that we have going on with the Nebraska Department of Education, specifically thinking more about career education and the opportunities that are available to all students in Nebraska as we really think about preparing tomorrow's workforce. Like Marcia mentioned, I'm Corey Epler. I've been with the Department of Education for three years, and my role is the Deputy State Director for Career Education. And as I've been traveling the state over the past couple of months, the message I continue to carry is that it's an incredibly exciting time to be in Nebraska and to be in education. The direction that the department is headed, and just in terms of the leadership, and really the exciting conversations about how we maximize opportunities for students is just extremely invigorating and very exciting. I know that there, it may be a little bit difficult to see some of the slides that I'll share and talk about, so I'm glad to share that with the boards after we're through. But I want to talk to you a little bit about career education as maybe a different way of thinking in terms of how we go about preparing students for jobs, but how we grow industries and how we continue to grow talent. And there's a lot of conversations in Nebraska about keeping our fantastic, great, amazing students in rural Nebraska and in our communities, and so we want to make sure that we're preparing them for jobs that exist in local communities and areas. We hear a lot on a daily basis of this idea of college and career readiness, and it's really been within the last several years that I've started to think about, what do we truly mean by college and career readiness? And is that for all students? Are we talking about preparing all students for entrance into post-secondary education or ultimately their career? And so I think that it's important for schools really to consider and to think about, where is our focus? As we think about working with students and preparing students, is the focus on getting them into college, which is where a lot of the conversation leads? But how often do we continue to have conversations about what happens after post-secondary training? What are you going to do with the rest of your life? College is a short stop on, well, longer for some, including myself, onto what the students want to be and what careers they want to explore. So I think what we're seeing in Nebraska is schools are really thinking more critically about, where's our focus? How are we helping all students think about post-secondary training? We know that's important, but also, what is after that training? Where are the jobs? What am I preparing for? And what jobs are available to me in a local area and communities? One of the greatest things about my job is we hear a lot from employers, and employers are very vocal about what they need and what they expect in their employees. And it seems that we live in this world where there's a work-preparation paradox. And I've got some data that's from Gallup, and it's also from a higher ed survey, where 96% of chief academic officers at post-secondary institutions rate their institution as very effective at preparing students for work. So 96% of folks at a higher education say, "We do a great job of preparing students for the world of work." However, only 14% of Americans in a Gallup survey said that college graduates are well-prepared for success in the workplace. And you think about really what that means, is that do they have the knowledge and skillset that's required? So if you are a welder, do you have the knowledge and skillset that will allow you to be successful in that job? But we also hear a lot about employability skills. I put in quotes the phrase "soft skills" because that's typically what they're called, but we start to think about, do students have those employability skills that will allow them to be successful? Only 14% of Americans say that they do. If you take a look at it, and we look specifically at business leaders, only 11% of business leaders in this Gallup survey said graduating students have the skills and competencies that are their business needs in order to be successful. So as I think about it, the question on the screen that's imperative to consider is, are we preparing students to be effective employees? Are we preparing them and giving them the experiences, giving them the opportunities, and really allowing them to learn valuable skills that will set them apart in the labor market? That will allow them to be employable and will really allow them to be hired on the spot? We want our graduates to be hired, we want them to work. So I think it's an important question that all schools are considering right now, is what are the experiences that we're providing? What are the opportunities that we're asking students to participate in that allow them to become effective employees? Somebody that, those of you that are business owners would want to hire. If you're a business owner out there, you may struggle finding great employees. We know that it starts in our education system as we think about this talent pipeline. One of the things I think that is really critical for schools in Nebraska to consider is, are we preparing students for jobs that exist in our communities? That's critical. As we think about rural development and we think about maintaining a thriving region and thriving communities, we want to make sure that we are preparing students for the jobs that are here. So as you start to think about within your local communities, not just within a city limits, as we look at it from a regional perspective, where are the jobs? And notice, we're not just talking about getting them to college, where are the jobs? What are they going to do? Yes, they can leave for post-secondary education if they choose, but we want them back because there are awesome jobs here and a great life in all of these committees, or in these communities. So from a career education perspective, one of the things we continue to think about is how we provide schools and communities with the resources to help prepare students for their careers. Again, knowing that success in today's economy requires some type of post-secondary training that doesn't mean that everybody needs to go to a four-year institution, it means that they need to pursue education that's based on their career interest. If you want to be a registered nurse, you don't need to go to the four-year institution. You can go to Northeast Community College and get an associate's degree and go right to work. It's about preparing students and getting them to see the right education based on what they want to do with their life. In Nebraska, we have a career education model that is divided and separated into six broad career fields that branch out into 16 career clusters. And one of the words that's not on here, and I hesitated whether or not to even say it, but there's not the word vocational on here. We lost the label vocational education 20 years ago, and in Nebraska today, we talk about career education because every student going through our school systems will have a career. What are the careers that they're interested in? And knowing that we have a great opportunity at the secondary level to provide experiences for students to actually learn about those careers, learn skills and knowledge, and actually think about what type of education they need for those careers. So the data that I have up here, as we think about, are we preparing students for jobs that exist? This data is from the Department of Labor, the Nebraska Department of Labor, where it's looking at long-term occupational projections, and we were looking specifically at northeast Nebraska. We can even drill down into the county level, so we can get data for Pierce, for Knox, for Antelope County, for all of these counties in this area, to see where the jobs projected to be. The jobs that are listed on the screen are H3 jobs, so they're high-skill, high-demand, and high-wage. The top H3 job in northeast Nebraska through its projections into 2020 is heavy and trailer tractor-truck drivers. It requires the education of post-secondary non-degree award. I know for a fact that a student, if they wanted to be a truck driver, they could go to Northeast Community College, I think it costs about $2,700, and look at the average wage, $35,000. The second, registered nurses, we probably have a few of those in the audience, I'm imagining, the degree that's required, an associate's degree, average annual wage for registered nurses, $54,000. Now, I can tell you, if I was 20 years old, making $54,000, I would think I'm doing pretty well in life. Shoot, that's more than beginning teachers make, right? So we start to think about, how do we provide opportunities for students to experience these careers, knowing that these are the growing areas in our region? And if we're not providing opportunities for students in these areas, then our students will leave, because the jobs are not there for them. So you can look at the list, carpenters, elementary school teachers, licensed practical vocational nurses. If you want to be a registered nurse, you don't need to go to the four-year institution. You can go to Northeast Community College and get an associate's degree and go right to work. It's about preparing students and getting them to see the right education based on what they want to do with their life. In Nebraska, we have a career education model that is divided and separated into six broad career fields that branch out into 16 career clusters. And one of the words that's not on here, and I hesitated whether or not to even say it, but there's not the word vocational on here. We lost the label vocational education 20 years ago. And in Nebraska today, we talk about career education because every student going through our school systems will have a career. What are the careers that they're interested in? And knowing that we have a great opportunity at the secondary level to provide experiences for students to actually learn about those careers, learn skills and knowledge, and actually think about what type of education they need for those careers. So the data that I have up here, as we think about, are we preparing students for jobs that exist? This data is from the Department of Labor, the Nebraska Department of Labor, where it's looking at long-term occupational projections, and we were looking specifically at Northeast Nebraska. We can even drill down into the county level, so we can get data for Pierce, for Knox, for Antelope County, for all of these counties in this area, to see where the jobs projected to be. The jobs that are listed on the screen are H3 jobs, so they're high-skill, high-demand, and high-wage. The top H3 job in Northeast Nebraska through its projections into 2020 is heavy and trailer tractor-truck drivers. It requires the education of post-secondary non-degree award. I know for a fact that a student, if they wanted to be a truck driver, they could go to Northeast Community College, I think it costs about $2,700, and look at the average wage, $35,000. The second, registered nurses, we probably have a few of those in the audience, I'm imagining. The degree that's required, an associate's degree, average annual wage for registered nurses, $54,000. Now, I can tell you, if I was 20 years old, making $54,000, I would think I'm doing pretty well in life. Shoot, that's more than beginning teachers make, right? So we start to think about, how do we provide opportunities for students to experience these careers, knowing that these are the growing areas in our region? And if we're not providing opportunities for students in these areas, then our students will leave because the jobs are not there for them. So you can look at the list, carpenters, elementary school teachers, licensed practical vocational nurses, secondary school teachers, plumbers, machinists, accountants, automotive technicians and mechanics. The thing that's interesting about this list of H3 jobs projections, and again, these are the projections for Northeast Nebraska, is the majority of them require less than a bachelor's degree. So what we've been able to do is, we have conversations with schools, is we want to make sure that the career education programs that they provide reflect this data. So if we are looking at registered nurses as being a hot, growing job in Northeast Nebraska, we have health science courses that can be taught in a secondary school system. We can provide connections between healthcare providers and employers, so our students actually get to practice what it's like to work in the healthcare field. So we can really set them up for success at an early age and transition into that post-secondary education. But what we see in some instances is that the local schools, when presented with this data, sometimes it's quite eye-opening because this whole thing about tractor-heavy truck drivers, they're like, "Well, I never thought about that." But we start to think about Nebraska, with the nature of our geography, I-80 and some of those types of things running east to west in the state, there are great jobs in Nebraska in local communities that don't require a four-year degree, but we want to make sure that our secondary schools provide experiences for students in these areas. What we've done at the state is we've developed programs of study, which are a sequence of three courses. So I use health sciences as an example. If a student wants to be a registered nurse, there are courses that a local school can teach that would go into a certain depth of instruction and potentially have connections with the community college, so there's dual credit that's awarded, so they're earning college credit and high school credit at the same time. Then all of a sudden, they get to the community college, they've got some courses knocked out, and before they know it, they have their associate's degree and they're working. They're contributing to the economies and they're contributing to the communities through these jobs. So that's a key message that we want to share with schools, and we've had the conversations with all five school districts through a process called revision, to really get them to be thinking about, do our career education programs reflect where the jobs are? And if they don't, what are the changes we might consider making so that we truly are preparing students for careers? Not just to go to college, but careers, and careers that exist, so that they come back or they stay. They never leave because the jobs are here and it's what they want to do. I mentioned dual credit. Through our programs of study, we embed dual-credit courses within those particular programs. And if you're not familiar, dual credit is when a high school student will earn high school and college credit. I know there are strong partnerships with Northeast Community College in this area. So thinking about what role would Northeast Community College play in offering a capstone experience for a student that would allow them to earn high school and college credit at the same time? And really, that just broadens opportunities for students, not just within career education, but thinking about advanced placement courses. So those are also additional types of dual-credit courses that can be offered through a secondary school. And it helps with transitions into post-secondary education as well. And this isn't just about career education courses, but what we know is there's a strong opportunity to be very intentional about embedding core academics within career education courses. Or more, probably better said in terms of making education more relevant. I'm a former teacher, and my first couple of years, I taught welding. And I tell you what, I had students who hated geometry in the geometry classroom, but then when they came to the shop and told me how they were building their trailer, and 45 and 45 equals 90, they're doing contextualized geometry. So we have to continue in education to do a better job of that. So can we make our core academic courses more relevant to what students are interested in, so hey, they're engaged? They want to learn math. They want to learn English. They want to learn science because it's taught in a context that is exciting for them, that they see a connection with and are relevant to as well. One of the key pieces of a career education system is a systematic career development experience. There are some key pieces of data that we need to consider as we think about when students are making choices about careers. The data points out that students start thinking about careers in fourth grade or earlier. And what we know is that adolescence is a perfect time to help students explore career interests. But a lot of times, the concern in the conversation is really about getting into college versus what you're going to do after you graduate from a post-secondary institution. And research shows that often, career decision-making is more emotional versus factual. So it's very, you know, it's based on their emotions versus a very systematic approach. At the Department of Education, we have conversations with schools about starting the conversation about careers in the elementary. At the elementary level, it's really about career awareness. What are the possible careers? At the middle school level, it really is getting them to explore all of these areas. At the high school level, allowing them to make decisions, specifically course decisions, about what their career interests are. One of the things you'll note down at the bottom is it says flexibility and choice. This isn't about a student making a choice as a fourth grader and being locked into it. This is about them having the opportunity to explore all of these options at an early age. I was reflecting as I was driving up from Lincoln today, when I was a sophomore in high school, if you asked me what I wanted to do, I would have told you an accountant. And then I took high school accounting. Nothing against accounting, but I'll let you know that I discovered it was not my passion. I wasn't that great at it. But had I not had that experience, I guarantee you I would have enrolled at the university as a college freshman, majoring in accounting, would have wasted a year or more of my time until I really figured out what I wanted to do, would have wasted a lot of money that my parents didn't have. So the fact that I explored that career at an earlier age, it helped me really think about, what do I really want to do or what don't I want to do? So I think as we have conversations with students, it really isn't about locking them into anything. It's about saying, "Here are the opportunities, let's explore them." So then as they make decisions about courses, and as they make decisions about where they want to go to post-secondary education, they're informed. They're able to say, "I took high school accounting, that's really not for me. I think I really want to go into education. So I know what I need to do as a freshman at a post-secondary institution." So I want to make sure to emphasize that point, it's not about locking anybody into a career. It's about flexibility and choice and giving students the opportunity to explore at an early age. Those of you that have students in college, you might be sitting there saying, "Amen, brother. We wish you would have had that conversation several years ago with students." But we start thinking about helping them really figure out what they want to do. And it's not just about the actual career, it's also about our employability skills. So as we think about each of our students, do our students possess the employability skills needed in the workplace? Do they work effectively with others? Can they get up in front of an auditorium or a gymnasium and speak fluently? Do they understand the value of creativity and innovation? And beyond that, how do we embed all of those into our curriculum? Not just in career education, but within core academics as well. We know that helping students be ready for careers is not just the responsibility of career ed teachers, not just the responsibility of the school counselor, it's everybody. Every teacher has a role in helping students see how what they're learning can connect to their future careers. It's so critical and such an exciting mission as well. Another key piece that we talk about in career education is providing students with meaningful workplace experiences. Some of this data I found slightly disturbing, that research points out that with today's students, they may be 19 before they take their first job. Now, I know that's going to vary in terms of different communities and states as well, but the majority of students are not working today. So the first time they go to work is when they are out of post-secondary training. And sometimes they bring with them unrealistic expectations of what work is like. They see what Google and Facebook offices look like, and then all of a sudden, they're sitting in a cube with beige walls, like I do. And they're like, "This isn't what work is like." Yes, it is. This is exactly what work is like. So how do we get students into experience work at an early age? How do we really allow them to think about what work will be like? As we, Gallup had a survey in 2013, and of business leaders, the one trait that they is most important to them and future employees, it's not where they went to school, it's not what their grade point average was, but if you're students, you need to study, let me tell you that. It's not what their degree was, it's do they have, have they had an internship or a workplace experience? There's this huge shift in terms of the thinking among business leaders that the most important thing is the person, it's not the grade, it's not the major, it's not the college. It's do you have the right skillset for the job? Have you worked before? Are you a hard worker? Have you experienced that before? The other thing that I think is interesting is that there's research, and this is out of the United Kingdom, that points out that students who have had four or more exposures to work earn more. And the data in this peer-reviewed article was 18% more. So students who've had four or more exposures to work, a job shadow, an internship, some type of mentoring program, they make more money. So again, we start to think about, are we, how are we preparing our students for careers? We also want engagement, we want engaged students. Gallup, the research out of the Gallup Purdue Index reports that students who've had experiential and deep learning are more engaged at work. And what that looks like is a project that lasts longer than a semester, that they have a mentor, they become engaged at work and really engaged in the mission and the work that they're doing. We know that all of this won't happen without partner engagement and really thinking about how we prepare students for their careers. Business leaders and employers want to be involved in our local schools. They see such a strong link between education and the future workforce. 13% of business leaders think that there is a great deal of collaboration between education and business, it's pretty low. 88% favor an increased level of collaboration. Businesses and employers want to be engaged in the school systems. They see the talent pipeline, they see the role that they play. And 77% of businesses say that they could do more to increase collaboration. So as we work with schools, one of the questions we ask is, who are the key employers in a community? Not just within the city limits. I always use the example, I grew up in a small town in southeast Kansas where we got our groceries, wasn't where we got our tires changed, wasn't where my dad got his tractor fixed. My mom thought she had to go to Oklahoma to get her hair done. So we think about it from a regional perspective, not just what's happening within city limits. So it's not just within one area, but we look at it, who are the employers? Who are the people that are going to step up and say, "We need workers"? We hear from businesses all the time, and there's good examples in Nebraska. You look what happened when Grand Island, they've recently built a Career Pathway Institute. There were manufacturing businesses in Grand Island that said, "Hey, school system, you're not preparing workers for us. If you don't, we're leaving." That was huge when two big, large manufacturing companies in Grand Island said, "We're going to get out of here unless you start preparing students for us." Guess what? Grand Island School System, they said, "Absolutely." And they have this amazing facility that's preparing students for careers in manufacturing, careers in information technology, and construction. So employers want that. And the cool thing about that is employers stepped up and they started writing checks. They started donating equipment. They said, "We're demanding employees, here's how we're going to help." It's a great example of that collaboration. I don't have permission to use that, so... That usually happens at work, not here. But it's not just employers, who are the other potential partners? Are there nonprofits? Are there community organizations? You know, we could, I didn't even mention entrepreneurship, but who are the entrepreneurs in our communities? How can we help students? Someone recently said that if students help build something, they stay. You look at Cody Kilgore and what the students did in terms of the entrepreneurial spirit there. And if we engage students in building something, really fantastic, they stay, they don't leave. So we have to think about entrepreneurship as well. One of the things that continues to be exciting about the conversations in Northeast Nebraska, and I've shared this with the superintendents, every time I go back to Lincoln and people ask me, "What's happening up in the Northeast region?", I always communicate that the message is loud and clear with these conversations. It's about how do we provide more opportunities for our students? And I applaud the boards and I applaud the communities for saying, "We want to make sure that not only are we preparing the best college students, but we're preparing the best employees. And we want them to stay here. And if they choose to leave to pursue post-secondary education, they come back because the jobs are here. And we've trained them for the jobs that are here. We have the data, we've worked, we've aligned all of those pieces. And we really think that what's happening up here is just a great conversation about opportunities for students. And that's exciting, and I applaud you all for thinking about students and putting them first in all of this." I'll be glad to share this PowerPoint with the superintendents if anyone would like it. I know some of the data was hard to see. I believe we're taking, will I take questions from the board now, or? If any of the board members have questions, I'm glad to speak to them. You can tell I'm a little passionate about this subject, so...
I'd like to have you clarifying that they're not locked in to these core classes in any way. So if they wish to try all six, they can. If they wish to go back to one, they can. If they wish to not do it at all, they can, correct?
Absolutely.
There's nobody being forced?
No, absolutely not. I think about students who want to be a doctor or nurse until they realize they don't like blood. Or I was, you know, when I taught animal science, students who wanted to be a veterinarian until they realized that cattle are a little messy in a pen. But it's about flexibility. So, and my example of me wanting to be an accountant, and then all of a sudden, I took accounting, and I was like, "No way." So we want to really emphasize its flexibility and choice. They're not locked into anything. But at least they had the opportunity to explore those areas early, so they're not, I hate to say wasting money, if they go... The reality is, many students go to college not knowing what they want to do. That's fine, but some of the data that I, you know, I typically say, "The post-secondary institution is an expensive place to find yourself." Those of you that have students in college know that it's not cheap today. So if we can help students have some type of idea of what they want to do and make informed decisions about that, ultimately, we're getting them through college quicker, we're getting them into the economy, we're getting them to work. And I think that's really, really exciting to think about that potential. Thanks for that question, I appreciate it. Yes, sir?
Well, I'd like to mention entrepreneurship. I think that's one area that many of our teachers are already extended so much, it kind of gets, I'm sure a lot of them like to opt for it, and it's an area that kind of gets blown over, but I think that's one area that really needs to be looked at much harder and give our students opportunities to look into that, find their passions.
Absolutely. And entrepreneurship is within all of our career fields and all of our career clusters, so they can start a job no matter what their interest would be. And it's such an important conversation as we think about rural Nebraska and how do we continue to build rural Nebraska and help rural Nebraska survive? All right, well, I appreciate the time this evening, thank you.
I'm Mike Chips with Northeast Community College, it's wonderful to be here. Being a fellow Nebraskan from Grand Island, actually, I was born and raised there. My parents were raised in the Bolus, Danabrog, Mason City, Nebraska area. Does anybody know where even that is? At least we have three, one in the back, I'll talk to you later. And it became Centura Public School, I don't know if you know that, but the carol there at the Five Mile Bridge, and I was a young man and I watched that come about with Centura, and that was, I think, one of the first in Nebraska to be able to make that consolidation work for them. And again, we want to assure you from Northeast Community College is that we're not here about consolidation, what we're here about is a partner with educational processes, namely your boards and your superintendents and these fine citizens in this area. Corey, or Dr. Epler, set the stage so well. Matter of fact, I think I owe you five bucks after this, so see me later if you would. I didn't talk to you about that, but you couldn't have spoke more about Northeast or community colleges in general, Corey. And of course, after 34 years of working in Nebraska's community colleges, and on purpose I've done that, because with 34 years, I intentionally, my wife and I have stayed within Nebraska because we love Nebraska and we love Nebraska's community colleges. And they're just, Corey echoed that. last meeting, and it mentioned that this needs to be more than the technical conversation. But Corey and I believe so strong in that, but I think I need to emphasize to you that comprehensive is the word for your community college, which is not too far from you here. It's comprehensive, it's lifelong, it's learning-centered, and it serves to meet the diverse needs of you, our public. And that's what a community college, especially ours, and that's the board's mission. I think one thing that's important to understand, though, and I think it's, sometimes it isn't quite understood as well, is this next and my only slide. So I have a first and a last slide. You like me already, don't you? I can tell. Let's see if it does that. I guess I gotta go over here. Is that where I go? And you're promising me this works, right? Oh, yeah, there it is. Let's try it again. Come on up here. I need all the help I can get. He was asking me whether or not he should do the remote or I should, and now I know who should have done that. And I think it's important that we probably look at this from, you know, we serve, how many school districts is northeast responsible for by the legislature? That's sixty schools. And by the way, in a five-year rotation, I meet with the superintendents and principals and counselors of all of those. Friday, I was in three school districts. And what I do is learn so much about the great things you're doing with so little often. I'm just totally amazed by that. I also look at technical vocational, that's really dear to my heart, so I want to make sure what's happening there. And also, we serve over a hundred communities, and I hope you can see this behind me, that basically, we're covering a hundred miles north and south and two hundred miles east and west. If you're looking about the Missouri River, you go south of Norfolk a little bit, and then you go all the way past Amesworth, and you go all the way past West Point. That's quite a territory that we've been assigned. The Nebraska Legislature in nineteen seventy-three made a innovative, you called entrepreneurial, I think earlier, Russ, I believe it was you, that talked about an entrepreneurial idea to be able to regionalize all these community colleges on behalf of our public. And they went ahead and did that. And a lot of states have tried to replicate that over the years and had difficulty doing that. But they took sixteen to nineteen campuses, I forget the exact number, and broke us down into six districts. What you see behind us is northeast community colleges service area. And so we've got a huge expanse to be able to take care of sixty schools right now, of five of which are here tonight. So that's fourteen thousand square miles, and I put a lot of miles on those cards to make sure that we can provide the best services possible. The next thing is, the Nebraska Legislature decided that we would have four tenants of which we operate by. And this really addresses, the minutes of the last meeting has to do with the applied or the technical piece, which Corey's already talked about eloquently in the reference to how important technical is to the future of America and especially to rural Nebraskans. But beyond that, basically, our number-one goal, our number-one responsibility is technical and career education, of which Corey's talked about. And so that's why we're here. That's one of the reasons we're here, is to listen to these conversations, to be able to better understand from these boards and superintendents about what we need to do as far as further engagement with you and what that really means to further partner with you. I'll talk about the partnerships we already have, because we plan on keeping those, of course, and strengthening them as we need to. The second responsibility or tenet is academic education. But that's all these, basically, like Corey said, really need to lead to some form of employment, but with academic education, also, we come with the issue of academic transfer. We've built tremendous transfer partnerships with multitude of institutions. We have the Nebraska Transfer Initiative. I think it's with forty-four institutions, including now Creighton University. And a point, and an example that Corey talked about with dual enrollment or dual credit, is I experienced a student that received forty-one credit hours at Ogalala High School, and she transferred all of those right into Creighton. And of course, her parents were the happiest in that whole equation because they saved thirty thousand dollars in doing so. But it's more than just saving money, it's the issue of equality education provided through your local college. The third thing we have to do really kind of focuses in on what I call that entrepreneurship piece, because northeast, we started what we call the Center for Enterprise, which is designed for customized training with business and industry, but also for entrepreneurs. And it's very important that we promote that, because we know well, in rural Nebraska, rural revitalization is very important to our Board of Governors. And so with rural revitalization, entrepreneurship is second none to that. We've got to be able to provide training and education for people, not only to, they've got the idea, that's not the issue. How do we put a business framework around that idea so that they can really produce and sustain their operations in rural communities? That's what's very important and dear to the heart of our board members. But academic education, we do provide a lot of that. So that kind of talks to the issue of, we're not only about technical education, which was a concern, because we do spend a lot of time on that, because we know what America needs. And that is, we need a lot more people going into the workforce with career skills, not just with four years of college. It's not that certainly, Corey and I can speak to the issue. We've been in college for a long time, both of us carry doctorates, and that just means we've been there a long time. But that, but to be able to have work skills that really fit the workplace are so important to our students and to us. It should be anyway. So academic education that leads to a transfer piece that goes into the bachelor's or master's degree is important. What's interesting about northeast is, we've also provided now, and you'll be seeing more of it as we meet with Concordia University on the eighteenth, we'll be going to Seward and putting together, architecting another partnership with them to be able to, to be able to have public university rates at a private university for the Lutherans and anyone else that wishes to attend Concordia, we'll be able to put that together so that they can be able to lead northeast and go in affordable education at a private university. So that gives us that balance. The next thing we did, and you've read about it, has to do with Bellevue University. We put that together largely for our non-traditional working population. It was really important that we do that, because we have a lot of people that need those skills in order to go into management positions in all kinds of businesses and industries. So we put that together recently, and they're housed on our campus. And of course, thirdly and most importantly, is the traditional student. That has to do with the transfer to Wayne State College and other major colleges and universities, of which right now, we have eighty-five to ninety students going to Wayne State directly every year from northeast and doing extremely well. So that third piece, the first one is career. The second piece is academic education, which is academic transfer, and focused on that. The third one has to do with customized training and entrepreneurship. And the fourth one has to do with applied research. We need to work more on, we're looking at a center for applied, a center for excellence with agriculture and water. We're spending an awful lot of time understanding that water is a bag of gold, and it will be a bag of gold in the future. How do we do a deal with water management, water quality at northeast at the applied level? So we're looking for a national center for agriculture and water excellence, which we need to really tie closer into our rural environments, our farmers. We have two-hundred-and-eighty-four students in agriculture, so it's very important that we continue to support them, because most of them head back to their local family farms. So we want to build a center that really supports that concept with them. So in the next three years, we, the board really would like to see us put that together on what we're going to eventually call East Campus. So those are the four tenants that were given by the legislature to us. That was technical, that was academic, that was foundations or entrepreneurship and customized training, and the fourth one being applied research. The next piece has to do with rural revitalization. Our board, when they hired me, said, Mike, you're basically spending a lot of time in Nebraska. We need to make sure that we revitalize our areas, because we have a hundred communities and sixty schools to work with. And so how do we continue to help them be sustainable, and how do we help them to grow? So it's important to our governing board to be able to be focused with me on that attempt, and this is certainly some of the things that you're thinking about tonight. Our primary role is educational and training opportunities needed by you, but we also need to contribute to what we call the workforce development. So that Center for Enterprise that I talked to you about just a few minutes ago, I go, we've got a real focus on being able to work with the current industries and businesses that we have in our fourteen thousand square mile region. So that's another reason why we're here. Now this work includes supporting career pathways, and Corey talked about that, Dr. Epler talked about that with you a little bit, and again, it seems like, as I listened to it and made notes, Corey was listening to me at many tables, of which I speak on a weekly basis. You could tell that it really is in line with what northeast is doing. So to sustain rural communities, we're continually partnering with school districts and post-secondary institutions, like I mentioned earlier, to develop pathways for your students. And these pathways have to be meaningful, folks. They just can't be meaningless. And like Corey well said, the issue is, they cannot, it's a pretty expensive visit just to go to college to figure out what you want to do for a living. Now, it's just, we all do that, and if we really look honestly at our own lives, sometimes we have what we call that drift effect. But we've got to be able to get these students to focus a lot earlier and to be able to give some thought, at least a cluster area, so they, so they are not only interested in it, they have an aptitude for it, and they pursue it. And that's really our responsibility, especially as you think about what you're going to look like in the future. Our research has shown that by 2018, nearly two-thirds of all American jobs will require some, and I emphasize some, post-secondary education. And Corey spoke to that, and while some of the twenty-first century jobs will require a bachelor's degree, most of them do not. And I'm not sure we want to hear that, really, but the fact is that the facts are speaking for themselves, is that people need a trained workforce. And there's nothing wrong with a bachelor's degree. I can speak to that, because I have one, and many of you do, master's degrees or doctor's degrees. But the issue is, is that that doesn't settle the issue, what about the workforce that America needs in order to take the lead again? And we're now sixteenth in line as far as globally, and it has to do with, what are we going to do about this issue of trying to send everybody off to something that which they can't get a job? We have more and more students coming back to the college. Right now, nationally, one in five. Twenty percent are coming back to community college for what reason? After they finish their degree. Job skills, I heard in my lap over here. They're looking after job skills because they can't find a J-O-B. Another statistic, and no one wants to hear about, there's a supermajority of students at the age of twenty-nine. I don't know what twenty-nine has to do with it, but they're moving back in with mom and dad. Now, I don't know about my kids, but I said, listen, that's not going to be a possibility. I see some head nodding, at least some board members there. Oh, I'm not quite that tough, but I appear to be. So, you know, what we really need to be focusing on here, folks, is not only a community college education, that's not what we're trying to say, but most of the individuals whom we work with, to be quite frank with you, they return back to their communities, or they stay in our service area, our twenty-county service area, or they stay within the state of Nebraska. And I hope as parents, and I'll say it this way, I have seven grandchildren as well, but it's nice that the kids stay in Nebraska. It's nice they stay in northeast Nebraska. And it's greater yet that they come back to our towns and start businesses or take over mom and dad's business. You know, one of the big issues we have are people coming in and taking over businesses from people my age. They just, there's not enough of them doing that. But if we're going to reinstate our communities and continue to revitalize rural America and especially our area, we have to be very intentional about this. Part of the job at northeast is certainly to educate students, parents, and other educators about the value of career and technical education. And I know it seems like sometimes you hear a lot about that. The problem with Americans is that we consider technical education to be a lesser degree, a lesser option, and it's still an option sometimes considered for those that can't quite get to a real college, and that is, God forbid that we're that way. You know, Corey put up the stats, I mean, let the stats speak for themselves. It's amazing what people do at northeast and where they come from, and our outstanding alumni would knock your socks off of the things that they're doing in their lives to change our world. Well, I know we need to kind of finish up here, folks, and I know you're getting tired, and you've been real patient with both Corey and myself, but he is, he's got a lot better data than I do. The United States, which for generations led the world in degree completions, now, like I said, sits at sixteenth. A lot of people aren't finishing school, folks. Northeast is one of the highest retention standards of students in the country. At forty-seven percent of retention when it comes to getting them to what we call completion, that's what this ribbon's all about. We're very intentional about getting them started, making sure they have support services around them, and getting them to complete, because we have to get these students to be globally competent and competitive. We just have to do that. We don't have a choice anymore, and to be able to be global citizens as well as local citizens. So northeast is always seeking ways in partnering with schools in our service area, and right now with you folks, to meet the needs of students and the challenges faced by our communities, our state, and our nation. And that's another reason why we're here. So in closing, the opportunities that we provide for your students and the fifty-five other schools on which we work include multiple career exploration activities, of which Corey talked about, but those are on our campuses. We have tons of dual-credit classes. We've gone from eight-hundred-and-fifty students last year to one-thousand-and-fifty-four this year. It's growing phenomenally in our schools, because they want to get that transitional piece, yes, they want to get their credits, do whatever they want to do, transfer or come to us. That's what's important, that we can get them connected and get them into the college environment, the college rigor, so they can withstand that. And then we also do so many academic transfer-type programs with the different schools. We do with, we do credit courses delivered online through interactive television or in traditional classrooms. We do it in a hybrid style, and we're also involved in these career academies, of which Corey talked about earlier, of where we can actually set up a variety of career academies with your school, so they can get some ideas before they actually leave you. So northeast Community College, again, has been invited here as a friend, and I'm here to tell you, we're a friend of yours, we're about the best friend you got when it comes to local, post-secondary educational opportunities for all ages. We serve cradle-to-grave. I think the oldest I graduated was eighty-three, and the youngest is fourteen, to my knowledge. And so we serve everybody in all places in their lives to be able to get them to stay here, because if we believe we can educate people here, the odds are they're going to stay here and help our rural communities grow. Thank you.
On behalf of the five boards of education, I would like to thank Dr. Epler and Dr. Chips for your comments and providing the overview of what both institutions can provide this joint venture. Again, thank you. Okay, we are going to take a five-minute recess and reorganize, and then we will begin again with Mr. Rex Schultz, and five minutes. Thank you.
As you've been told, my name is Rex Schultz. I'm an attorney from Lincoln. I'm going to apologize to you for my voice. If anybody cannot hear me or understand me, raise your hand, and I'll talk slower or try to talk louder. The other speakers told you where they're from geographically. I'm originally from northeast Nebraska. My mom's from Hartington, my dad's from Stanton. I started life in Creston, if anybody knows where Creston is. It's a town of a hundred people. I lived on the north edge of town, two blocks from downtown, so... When I was two and a half, my mom sent me to the grocery store and I didn't come back.
On behalf of the five boards of education, I would like to thank Dr. Epler and Dr. Chips for your comments and providing the overview of what both institutions can provide this joint venture. Again, thank you. Okay, we are going to take a five-minute recess and reorganize. And then, we will begin again with Mr. Rex Schultz. And five minutes, thank you.
Give everybody a moment to settle in. As you've been told, my name is Rex Schultz. I'm an attorney from Lincoln. I'm going to apologize to you for my voice. If anybody cannot hear me or understand me, raise your hand and I'll talk slower or try to talk louder. The other speakers told you where they're from geographically. I'm originally from northeast Nebraska. My mom's from Hartington, my dad's from Stanton. I started life in Creston, if anybody knows where Creston is. It's a town of 100 people. I lived on the north edge of town, two blocks from downtown. When I was two and a half, my mom sent me to the grocery store and I didn't come back. Eventually, I did, I guess. I was asked to kind of tell you a little bit about myself in addition to the introduction that you got. One of the very first things that I got to work on when I came to work at the law firm was school reorganization. A lot of that went on 30 years ago. And the first thing I got to do was count ballots at an election, a different type of election process. So, I've been around school reorganization for my whole career. And I understand very clearly the issues that all five of your communities are addressing. I'm going to talk to you tonight about process. I'm not going to talk to you about, talk to you as an advocate for reorganization, but I'm going to talk to you about how you go about doing it. Because as you go forward with it, there are choices that have to be made. And the reason for that is, is that school districts, each of these five school districts, are creatures of statute. That's what our, that's the fancy words that our Supreme Court uses. And they only have the powers that are granted to them by the law. In the area of reorganization, those laws are very finite and very detailed. And they provide options, some that fit and some that don't, with regard to the different types of processes. So, what I want to talk to you about are those processes. And I've been asked to take you all the way through it. So, I'm going to try to do that in 45 minutes. I'm going to ask the board members, and the board members only at this time, if you have questions while I go through this process, please ask them when they come to mind. It'd be much more germane and much more helpful to all the folks here. If you ask a question, I will attempt it. Repeat the question so everybody can hear it. At the end of my presentation, I will entertain a few germane questions, germane to process. So, you may want to think about those. You always have the opportunity, in addition, if you don't get a question asked tonight, to email a question or write a question to your superintendent and he can provide it to me if I can provide assistance in answering it. I think the key to any reorganization process is transparency and communication. I'm an old history teacher. I actually took the time to look up to find the source of the names of each of your communities. Really quite interesting. I found out that Wausau was named by two Lutheran pastors in the name of the first Protestant king of Norway. So, there you go. If you take nothing else away, you learned that tonight if you didn't know it. I've worked on reorganizations throughout the state. I practice from border to border. And these are some of the reorganizations that our firm has worked on over the years. Some of them have been around for 40 years, some are very recent. The reorganization that is most like the one that you're considering is the one involving Southern Valley Public Schools, which is located in the south-central part of the state. It's a merger of three school districts, Oxford, Orleans and Beaver City. And it was the first reorganization that was contingent upon the passage of a bond issue to build a secondary school building equal distant between each of the three towns. In fact, when I first went out there, I was riding with one of the superintendents. And we were driving south of Oxford and we got to Highway 136. And there was a triangular piece of land, about 40 acres. And I said, "Boy, that'd be a great place for the school." And he says, "That's where it's going to go." So, I felt, you know, at least I understood where they were going to put it. The reason I bring it up is, and it was about 20 years ago that it was done, is that it involves a process that we created at that time, which is now codified, which I'm going to talk to you about in a few minutes. And that has to do with an election process, but not a direct election, or to support the reorganization. So, let's talk a little bit about the two processes that you have available to you, if I can get things going. I'm going to skip through a few slides just to get to this. You heard the term reorganization. Reorganization in our statutes involves really two types of reorganization. One is merger of school districts. In other words, you take two school districts, three school districts, four or five school districts, and make them into one. Or we have a secondary, or I would call, well, I kind of call it living together, a process called unification. And unification was very popular about 10, 15 years ago. I believe there's really only one unified district left. But unification has been used as a process to bridge the period of time between being independent districts and becoming merged districts. And so, I'm going to talk a little more about unification a little later in the process. Merger, there are really two methods available to you. There's the election method, also called the petition election method, and the petition or board-to-board method. So, let's talk a little bit about the election method first. Because, and I'm going to skip through these two slides to save time. I'm going to talk about the election method first because most of you would think, at least initially, that, "Well, we'll have an election and we will all vote on whether or not we should merge these schools together." And you certainly can do that. And the process you do to do this is you prepare a plan of reorganization that's developed by the school districts. You then submit that to the State Committee for Reorganization of School Districts, which is a committee of five people. They meet at the State Department of Education. They are from five regions all over the state. And they hold one or more public hearings on the plan. I will tell you that those public hearings are always held in Lincoln. Okay, so when they meet, they meet in Lincoln. And the new Board of Education, and they will hold hearings. And if they determine to approve the plan, it goes forward and is delivered back to the schools to have an election. If they disapprove the plan, the plan is dead. Have I ever had a case when the state reorganization disapproved the plan? Yes, that has occurred. But most of the time, they go forward. If it's approved by the State Committee, an election must be held, not less than 30 nor more than 60 days after designated as a final plan. But here's the key to the election method reorganization process. All districts of like class vote as one unit. All the school districts we're talking about here, Bloomfield, Creighton, Osmond, Plainview and Wausau are all Class III school districts. Therefore, the plan would go to a vote conducted by the Election Commissioner. The election would require a majority vote of all voters voting in each voting unit. In this case, there would be one voting unit because all districts are of like class. And the plan must be approved by a majority vote of all the voters of all of the districts together. So, for example, if there were 1,001 voters in all the districts combined, and the vote was 501 to 500, regardless of where the votes came from, the reorganization would be approved. So, no district would have veto power over the reorganization process in an election method reorganization. Board members, you have any questions about that part? Okay. The petition method of reorganization, and frankly, it's the one we used in Southern Valley, is the most popular way of doing school reorganization. In fact, nine out of 10 reorganizations that I've been involved in have been petition method reorganizations. The process finds its source in the actual circulation of petitions around school districts to accomplish reorganization. But about 40 years ago, the legislature determined that boards of education could approve reorganization petitions in what we call a board-to-board process, where you boards would approve the reorganization petition. The reorganization petition has specific requirements to it. And so, as you prepare the reorganization petition, you have to describe its boundaries of your new district, a summary of the terms. And I should go back here. And I'm sorry, I get accused of making my print too small. But this PowerPoint's available to all of you, everybody here if you want one. And this is kind of an important point. And I kind of skipped over in the election method. Under the election method of reorganization, the election requires that the new Board of Education be voted in at large or be appointed at large. And that the Board of Education of the new district, under the election method, may then determine if they want to elect board members by district or ward. In the petition method of reorganization, the school districts in their plan can designate that board members be elected by district or ward. And I'm going to talk more about districts and wards in a minute. But that's a distinction between the two methods that I think is important. Now, you notice at the bottom of the slide, I said the State Committee is to determine the initial districts or ward and the determinations of the members first appointed. I will tell you that they do that based upon the suggestions provided by these boards of education. So, when we go in with a plan, we'll go in, if we get to that point in the process, with a request of what those district awards would be and who the board members to be appointed will be and how many board members. And I'm getting a bit ahead of myself, but we'll get there. The plan would include a map and a statement whether or not the reorganization is contingent upon the success of a bond election to be held in conjunction with the petition. So, as I've discussed this matter with you board members when we met previously, the discussion was the possibility of the reorganization of being dependent upon a passage of a bond issue to construct a new secondary school building equidistant or as close as possible between the five districts involved. So, our petition would have to say whether that reorganization was subject to or contingent upon the passage of such a bond issue. So, unlike the election method, which you go directly to a vote of the people on the plan, instead, a board-to-board agreement, there's no direct vote of the people on the petition itself, but an indirect vote based on a bond issue referendum, which must be approved by all of the districts involved. Okay? So, you can have a petition, but what happens is this. Is the petition is granted a public hearing before the State Committee, again in Lincoln? If it's approved by the State Committee, it would go forward unless it's contingent on a bond issue. And if it's contingent on a bond issue, the State Committee holds the petition until the bond issue election is held. If the bond issue election is unsuccessful, if any of the five districts in our example do not approve the bond issue run in their district by their voters for the bond issue amount for that particular district, no further action is required on the petition and it dies. If, however, all the five school districts approve the bond issue, then the State Committee would meet within 15 days after certification and approve the petition and notify the clerk of that occurrence. And then, within 30 days, the State Committee would be required to appoint among the legal voters of the new district created the number of members necessary to constitute a new school board of the class in which the district is assigned. The new district would also be a Class III district. And the members would be appointed so that their terms of office are staggered in the election process. And once appointed, the board would then get organized according to the requirements of law. So, a couple of questions. What are some of the things districts need to be working out prior to taking such action? Well, you've got to develop a plan. And I will tell you, you've heard from your committees and you heard from the two speakers previously, that work has already begun on at least getting concepts for the development of a plan. You need to deal and discuss with the use of facilities and attendance centers, always a major issue in any reorganization. The construction of new facilities, which has been discussed here. The selection and election of the new Board of Education. Who's going to lead the new district? Student transportation. Busing, how are we going to transport students within existing districts or the former existing districts for elementary students? How are we going to transport secondary students? A general idea of the curriculum and your educational plan. We've heard a lot tonight about career academies. I can tell you that I've had the privilege over the last year of working with Scotts Bluff and Minden and Carney and Columbus on brand-new high schools passing bond issues for career academies. It is a focus of businesses in our state to have students better prepared to enter the workforce. Staffing, administration, teachers and support staff all have to be dealt with in the reorganization. And we have specific statutes to deal with some of those issues. And we'll talk a little bit about those in a few minutes. Another question. How many school board members may a newly created school district have? Brand-new statute goes into effect January 1, 2015. Right now, all of you have six-member boards. As Class III districts, you may have between six and nine members. Well, not between, you can have six or you can have nine. Now, you can have between five to nine, beginning January 1, 2015. And that's a decision or determination that would be made as part of the development of your petition. And you would specify that in your petition. And you can say, "Well, Rex, why would we want to go with five?" Well, five school districts, five board members. It's a bit of a concept of, at least initially, looking at equal representation. One of the things we always look at in school reorganization is, how do we provide each community a voice on the new Board of Education? And one of those ways is an initial appointment of board members, so there's a representation. Another way, as you move forward, is a determination whether or not you're going to elect board members at large or are you going to elect board members by ward or district? I had a conversation today with Neil Erickson, who's the Assistant Secretary of State for Elections, about the development of wards. And essentially, what it is, is wards are going to be developed based on population. So, and you're required to base the development of wards based on precinct lines. But generally, what we've attempted in reorganizations is as much as possible to follow existing school district boundary lines so that each community has a basis for having representation on the new board. By the way, I just said five because there's five school districts. You guys can make the determination whether it's five or nine, but somewhere in that area. In negotiating, working on reorganization petitions, much depends on the circumstances of the districts. Their respective student enrollments, both current and projected, financial resources, Board of Education structure, and, and I highlighted it, community feelings about such action. Reorganizations can be very divisive. But in the end, you are all here. And by the way, I'm amazingly impressed with the number of people here. This is an incredible showing of care about your educational system. People need to be informed and make informed decisions about the future of education. People need to be informed and make informed decisions about the future of education in your districts, and that you board members should be commended by the organized, careful, thoughtful process you're following so far. Emphasis in negotiations is usually placed upon four major issues. School or schools and grade levels to be located in the communities and for how long? The effective date of the reorganization, and I'm going to talk a little more about that a little bit later. Board representation, and again, use of school facilities. There we go. When I met with you folks previously, we talked a little bit about timelines. Rather than do that, I want to talk to you a little bit about, first of all, what the law says about when a reorganization must be effective. Essentially, it has to be effective by June 1st. In most orders are issued and made it effective as of June 1st. It can have an effective date as to August 1st of the same year, and that provides some leeway to close out operations. If you would merge sooner than June 1st, you would still maintain separate budgets, separate state reporting until the beginning of the next or new fiscal year. So it can be effective, but it can be effective not later than June 1st as for the issuance of orders. Now, let's take a step back. I'm going to stop right there for a minute. Any questions from board members? Okay, let's dive into, those of you who have copies of the PowerPoint, I deleted about five slides, so you don't get lost, just kind of follow through on the unification stuff. And I kind of promised I'd shorten it up a little bit. Why am I talking to you about unification? Well, when I talked to you previously, I mentioned that sometimes that can be a bridge toward reorganization. And unification is a process where school districts maintain their separate identity, but they become together as one for purposes of an entity for the State Department of Education. And you have a common levy, a general fund levy, which would include your building fund In addition to that, let's see, I'm going to go through this real quick. You enter into an agreement, and I'm going to use a word here that I'm going to use it in a couple of contexts in a minute. You're going to enter into an agreement, and that agreement is called an interlocal agreement, an interlocal cooperation agreement. The only difference is, is this one is approved by the State Committee. The agreement must provide that all property taxes and state aid will be shared by the unified system. All districts will have the same general fund levy within the statute of tortory limitations, your dollar five. And the certificated staff, including administrators and teachers, are to be employees of the unified district. So you really create one district as far as funding and your staff. It does require that it has a term of at least three years. The composition of the unified board, you must have at least one school board member from each district on the unified board. Could you all be on the unified board, everybody? The answer is yes. Is that a bit cumbersome? The answer is yes. But most unified districts I know are represented by two members usually from each board. Method or methods of accomplishing partial or complete termination, sometimes called a divorce. Additional provisions that you want to put in with regard to the management of the unified Now, I mentioned this was an interlocal agreement. And remember, I mentioned that school districts are creatures of statute. Interestingly enough, you may exercise any power that you have in conjunction with any other public entity, including Northeast Community College. The statute says, "Any powers or privileges or authority exercised or capable of exercise by a public agency of this state may be exercised and enjoyed jointly with any other public agency of this state and with any agency of any other state or the United States." That's pretty broad power. But that's really the basis for a unification agreement, and I point that out for a couple The application of a concept of unification or an interlocal agreement is a concept that a five-school district merger with a new secondary school involved would be aided by. Because as, when we go through the sequential part of my presentation in a few minutes, you're going to see that decisions are going to have to be made. Consultants may have to be hired to go forward with a reorganization process that would involve the construction of a new secondary facility if approved, if the bond issue were approved by the voters. And one means of doing that is entering to agreements with all of the school districts on our map here, all five of you. And that can either be a unification, interlocal agreement, or it can simply be an interlocal agreement without a unification. And as we discussed when we met before, that may be the preferred method. But nonetheless, you are going to need to work out a way to work through some of the hiring and issues that you are going to have to face as you move forward with the reorganization. So questions to answer. Let me stop there. Any questions about what I just talked about? Questions to answer. Why? Why should our schools consider reorganization? These are questions for you to answer. Who? Who should we retain to help us with these decisions? You've heard from the architecture, possible architecture committee, you've heard from your curriculum committee. What is the need? I think one of the reasons why the two gentlemen heard previously was to address need issues. When? When should the school districts unify? When should the school districts merge? Where? Where should the new secondary building be located? And how? How do we go about approaching this task, which is what we're here talking about right now? things to consider and decide, preliminary steps, feasibility study. You've already done a feasibility study, Dr. Ehlers did that for you. New construction planning, educational programming. I believe the investigation committee talked about doing site visits. You might want to go down and talk to Cross County Community School District or Southern Valley Public School District, which are both school districts that built central-site secondary school buildings and eventually elementary school facilities. Consideration of the reorganization process. Are you going to do interlocal agreements, as we just discussed? Are you going to go forward with the reorganization? Consider the content of those agreements and what tasks need to be done and the timeline to get them done, and develop that, and then communicate that timeline. Again, and this is a slide that really doesn't relate to the legal aspect, but it goes to your educational evaluation, determine if there is a need to change the delivery of public education to children in your communities. And again, expanded curriculum, specialization, and fewer preparations for teachers, improvement in school facilities, broader-based financial resources, community improvement, all of those are things that you guys have already discussed. So, assuming a merger of the five districts, or assuming of going forward with that, and you determine the need, then how are we going to fulfill that need? So, are you going to use an election method reorganization process or a petition method with a bond issue process? Are you going to enter into an interim agreement, either a unification agreement or an interlocal Are you going to adopt a timeline? When's the first school year of operation of the new district? Again, is it going to be contingent upon the successful bond issue election? Obviously, you need to do curriculum development for the merged district, and that involves not only folks, curriculum development is needed so you can plan the program that you're going to offer your students and allocate your staff to do that. You know, your greatest asset, other than really nice school buildings, are your teachers. How do we best use our teachers? They're the ones who deliver the product. How best could we develop a curriculum so that you get quality instruction by teachers who have time to prepare? Prepare your initial interlocal agreement or unification agreement. That's going to take action by the boards of all five districts, authorizing the presentation of a unification and a reorganization plan. Presentation of the plans to the five, to all these folks, to receive community input. Finalize your unification agreement or your interlocal agreement at a joint meeting like I would note that if you were going to do a unification plan and file it with the State, that'd be done prior to the reorganization plan being filed, because the reorganization plan has to be acted upon within forty days of filing with the State Committee, and you may not be ready at that point to do that. And you may say, "Why?" Well, if I enter into an interlocal agreement to help develop a new secondary school, you're not going to do that in forty days. It's going to take a long time, six months, eight months, something like that, to develop an educational program, to develop a schematic design for a new school building, to develop and find the opportunity for a site, to be able to totally inform these folks, what are we going to build? How much is it going to cost? How many dollars are we going to have to request in the bond issue? How do we size the bond issue? So, the concept is, is we develop our reorganization plan, we discuss it, we have it ready, we can give preliminary approval to that, but it not be filed until we're ready for it to be filed. Okay. If you have a unification agreement, you file it with the State Committee, and they act, and they'll enter it, just like a reorganization petition, by June 1st. If you don't do a unification plan, you simply have your interlocal agreement, and you go forward. You begin the planning process for your secondary building. Location, selection of construction and delivery method. You may say, "Well, why do I need to decide that now?" Well, you don't necessarily, but it's been a prevalent practice among districts in our state for the last fifteen years to use some form of construction management, to have a construction specialist help you size the bond issue. And often, that's done through a construction manager at risk or a construction consultant. And you say, "Rex, what do you mean by size?" Well, what am I going to build? And if I want to build this, what is it going to cost? And so when I size the bond issue, if I have a bond issue for X dollars, will X dollars build the program that I've put forth and told my voters that we're going to build? So we need to properly size the bond issue relative to what we're going to build. To do that, and to do these things, you need to retain a design firm, your architecture committee's talking about that. You need to retain a financial advisor and possibly retain a cost estimator or owner's rep or construction manager at risk. And then I go through a couple of slides and talk about what a CM does. Probably more detail than we need tonight, but essentially, their analysis is putting dollars to what it costs to develop a building plan, schedule, and provide the labor and materials to build a school building in this region. And then do the cost estimate to properly size the bond issue. Then the construction manager actually would go with them. They would manage your project, help with the design consulting, organize the work, hopefully organize the work in a manner that provides an opportunity for local contractors to participate, eventually give you a guaranteed maximum price for what the building will cost to provide the program you've designed. This is all done under a specific statute. Remember, I said school districts are creatures of statute. They must follow the requirements of our statutes relating to construction management, which in our case is the Nebraska Political Subdivision's Construction Alternatives Act. So that will require the boards collectively to go through that process, but it's not The pre-bond issue effort would then include meetings with the Board of Education Building Committees, administration, and staff regarding program needs, meetings of the architect, and the design team with the construction folks, review of the project scope and schedule, and then eventually get a recommendation from the architect and the, if you use a construction manager, a cost estimate for the sizing of the bond issue request. When that's all done, okay, so now we've planned our building, and we've worked together to plan it. At that time, the boards would take action to approve the reorganization plan and approve an agreement. And you'll recall in the reorganization plan, the draft, the sample I showed you, there was language in there to do this, to proportionally divide the building project cost based on valuation of each of the five districts involved, so that every taxpayer is paying an equal share regardless of what school district they're located in. At that time, you would also approve the bond issue resolution for each individual district and file the reorganization plan with the State Reorganization Committee. And have your hearing before the State Committee. Again, they have a public hearing with regard to the reorganization plan, and then the State Committee would hold the plan until the bond issue election is held. So the next step then would be to file your bond issue resolutions of each of the five districts with the county clerks, publish the required notices, provide information to the voters, and have a bond issue election in each individual district. Everybody clear on that? It's a bond issue election in each individual district. All right. Now, if the bond issue election is disapproved in any of the districts, any one, the reorganization plan ends, and the bond issue fails. Okay? If it's approved by all five, then we take action to certify the results of the bond issue with the State Committee. If it's, again, within fifteen days of certification, they take action to approve it. If unsuccessful, no action is required. Then we go through the nomination process, and I've already really covered these slides. Again, you nominate persons for the new board, you establish districts, they hold a public hearing, they take action to appoint the members, and provide any initial districts or wards, again, which would be suggested by the new district. If the bond issue is successful, or prior to the merger, the Board of Education of each of the districts would issue the bonds to finance a new secondary building and take action on the preparation of plans and specifications, because you don't have plans expected on yet, you've just got the program and you've got the schematic design. Now the architect's real work starts for the planning of the building. And if anybody's been through the building of a new building, you're going to have to take a look. you're going to have to take a lot of action. The new board will have to take a lot of action with regard to building, use, curriculum administration and staffing, and begin construction of the new project. And that's the end. How'd they do? Nine o'clock? Two minutes to nine. Board members' questions?
Mr. Shulker, in your experience with all the research and everything, can you tell us approximately how much it costs to get to the bond issue? Like with all the consultants and lawyers and architects?
Not so much for the lawyer part. You know, you kind of negotiate that. There, the architecture firms and the construction management firms are often very willing to do minimal fees for the development of the project pre-bond issue. But if I were going to take a guess for a project of this size, probably architecture fees probably in the area of thirty thousand dollars. CM fees in the area of about twenty thousand dollars. You know, so you're going to have an investment, something of that nature. I would say all told, probably a total investment by all five districts together, when you get through everything that you have to do, probably in the area of a hundred thousand dollars, give or take. So twenty thousand apiece, roughly. But, I mean, that's just a guess. Yes, ma'am? All right. The question is, what kind of timeline, timeline are we looking at from where you're sitting now? And I'm going to give you a standard lawyer answer. It depends. It depends on what you as boards and you as communities decide. I provided the boards with two timelines. One with an effective date, I believe in June of 2016, and one with an effective date of June of 2017. But if you look through the sequencing there, you don't need to go until you're ready to go. And then once you decide, you work through it sequentially with each step. I mean, I've done reorganizations without a building involved in sixty days. That's not this kind of reorganization. This is a reorganization that's going to take time to develop. So, to say, to give you a timeline, I can't give you a timeline. But I would say that you have to keep in mind that when you do a reorganization, you affect a lot of people. You have, you have building staff, you have, whether it's teachers or your educational support staff, your administration. We haven't even touched on the planning that goes along with that. And if somebody wants me to talk about that, I'll talk about it briefly. So, while I haven't given you an answer, what I'm saying to you is, is once you decide the reorganization method you're going to choose, either petition method or an election method, once you make that decision and start developing your plan, then you can establish a timeline and sequentially set yourself up so that you get a reorganization that is established in a manner that does not adversely affect student learning, on the one hand, but also allows you to move forward to get the matter presented to your voters. So, it's a non-answer answer, I can't tell you. Yes, sir? Okay. The question was, the state of Iowa. I'm going to summarize it. State of Iowa's fourth consolidation. What are the advantages or disadvantages of fourth consolidation? Well, I'm going to, we live in Nebraska, we don't live in Iowa. Okay? Nebraska is a populous state. We've tried to mandate school reorganizations two times during my legal career. Nineteen eighty-six and two thousand six. Did not go well either time. First time it got repealed, the second time it got repealed, but it didn't get repealed enough. Otherwise, we'd still have Class One districts. So first of all, I don't believe any politician in the state who wants to get elected the next time. I don't mean that to be funny, I'm serious. I don't think you're going to see mandatory consolidation in this state ever. Or at least not during my lifetime. We are a state high bound in self-determination of our communities and what we do with education. The strength of that is, is we make those decisions based upon what's best for kids and our communities. Our communities individually and collectively. That's kind of why I encourage the investigation committee to go down and talk to Southern Valley and how their experience has been. Because all three of those communities, Oxford, Orleans and Beaver City, gave up their school, or gave up their high school, and eventually their elementary school. And we can only learn from what other people experience. But we live in a, we live in a state that provides for self-determination. Now, obviously, individual districts don't have a, if the reorganization plan's put forward as an election method plan, individual districts won't have that opportunity, which is why I presented the other alternative to you. Now, I want you to note that if the school building is not involved in a petition method reorganization, there is no election at all. Everybody clear on that? Then a petition method's a petition method. The board's done, no election. So unless the school building is involved, a bond issue election, there's no election in a petition method. So then your only election method is the, or the only means of having a vote is an election method, which is, I learned a word in the South, it's all y'all vote together. That's plural for y'all. Question? Well, then you're going to, then you go and you take a right and a left, and you choose a different direction. I mean, it's, everybody has to come voluntarily to the party. So, that's, that's the individual board's choice. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you for making me do that. The question was, is we had turnover on the boards last week at the election. What does that do to the process? And my answer was, is, well, it takes, it takes five to tango or two to tango or whatever. The point is, is that if a board chooses not to go forward, they choose not to go forward. They do, they do. Does that answer your question? Okay. It's always an important subject. Well, first of all, I mentioned to you that teachers are assets, okay? Let's, let's just make an assumption that we're going to have a merged secondary staff in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. So some by the time between now and then, and if the merger went forward, the administration would determine the staffing needs in each curricular area, and then determine how many positions we currently have in that position and how many we need to reduce. I'll give you an example. In the merger of, in teachers, how many teachers here? Come on. I'm kind of talking to you guys. First of all, this shouldn't scare you at all, this is just, it's a process. When we merged Valley and Waterloo about ten years ago, we had seventy staff members as a whole. And we determined we needed to reduce that to fifty. So we had twenty staff positions. And so what we did was, I got a two-part answer to this. One, we have a statute, a series of statutes. In fact, those statutes are in the books I gave each of you. toward the back, seventy-nine, eight fifty to seventy-nine, eight fifty-seven, which protect teachers and their contracts in a reorganization process. And in those statutes, if there, it states, if there is to be a reduction in force, we're going to reduce the number of people, that we have to offer a early retirement incentive to those people who qualify under the statute, fifty-five and older, and staff development assistance to those people who are not qualified for the early retirement incentive, if they're going to lose their position. And there are specific benefits to be provided to that. The weakness in that particular statute is, is it doesn't allow you to make sure that you retain enough teachers in each endorsed area to maintain your accreditation. So what we did in, now what's now DC West, and what I've done many, many times, is I work with the NSCA representatives, and we work up an enhanced program to fairly compensate staff who is determined would be the ones to leave under a reduction in force. But usually what we do is we try to obtain staff reductions through voluntary attrition, and that can include more veteran teachers as opposed to just application of your RIF policy. I've probably done that fifteen times over the last twenty years. Always successfully, always fairly, to end up with the best staff that you can have. Now, you don't take that lightly, but it is a process that we will follow. And you follow, as I said, you're a creature of statute, you follow the law. And so that's kind of how you do it. Any other questions, board members? Okay. Been a long evening. I'll take, I'll take five questions from the audience. And I say five simply because we could be here forever. There's, yes, sir? About one, one question per person. For instance, one district has two million dollars in their building fund and another district has a hundred thousand. Like that, something like that. You can agree to that in your reorganization plan. Oh, oh, sorry, sorry. The question was, is let's say, one district has more money in, say, their building fund than another district has in their building fund. All right? If you merge and it all comes together, if it's a merger, okay? All those funds go into a common fund in your one district. If it's a unification process initially, in most unification agreements, those building fund monies are set aside for the individual districts per their agreement. But if it's a merger, and when a merger happens, and maybe I didn't say this clearly enough, all of the districts, all five of them dissolve. Okay? And a new district is created and all their assets and liabilities go together. So to answer your question, if one district has two million and one has a hundred thousand, everybody collectively gets the advantage of all those monies. So you can have one district that has a lot of money and another district that doesn't. And do any of you have bonded debt? Anybody have bonded indebtedness? Nobody? Q C. Puff, okay. Anybody who has, if you have bonded indebtedness, that bonded indebtedness would remain with the school district and the territory that voted it, unless you determine otherwise within the bond issue. As to any other funds, though, to answer your question, if it's a merger, they all go into one pool. No. Well, reorganization would be an umbrella. And under that umbrella would be merger and unification. And merger is when school districts combine. Okay? Yes?
That you would have, the board to board petition, that you would have a bond issue to actually vote at that time. Where on the election issue, instead of the petition, do you have to vote for a bond issue and that also?
No, no, ma'am, no, ma'am. Let me, let me clarify that. An election method reorganization is simply to merge the districts together. It has nothing to do with the bond issue. Okay? A petition method petition by itself, a board-to-board petition, meaning no vote of the people, just goes to the boards. The only way there's a vote of the people in the individual districts on a bond issue is if you make the bond issue a contingent part of the petition method petition. Did I explain that well? All right, let me try one more time. Okay. All right. Set the building aside, no building, no building. Okay? An election method reorganization is simply an election to merge the districts together and is not contingent on the successful passage of a bond issue. So you would all vote as one unit on that merger. Okay? So everybody got that straight? And I know it's difficult, so, okay. A petition method reorganization, standing by itself as a means of merging school districts, would be a board-to-board petition, meaning all five boards, or however many districts are involved, have to approve a petition. It does not involve an election at all. And if no building were involved in that, if no, we're going to build a new building, there would be no election. However, if the reorganization is contingent on the passage of a bond issue to build a new building, in other words, we're not going to merge unless we're going to build a new building together, then you can provide that in your petition, and the boards would approve that, board-to-board. It would go to the state committee, they'd have a hearing, and then they would hold it until we have the reorganization, or excuse me, the bond issue election. If the bond issue election fails, in any one district, it dies. If it, if it passes in all five districts, it goes forward. Did that, did that do it for you? No? No.
No, not ever?
Never.
Okay.
Well, the question was, is how do you build a new building? All right? You merge the districts, and then you hold a bond issue election. Okay? And you may or may not pass it, but it's two separate issues. Whereas, the only way to tie the merger to the bond election is to do a petition method with a contingent. So, everybody straight on that? Okay. I know that's a hard concept, but think of it this way, okay? Election method, we all vote together as one unit to get married. Okay? Petition method, the board votes to determine if we get married, but only if you get a new house. And you don't know how true that is. That's two questions. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am, over here. Okay, the question is, is, is there ever going to be a time when I won't need to run a bond issue to build a new house? Is that what you're asking? Is that what you're asking?
There are always a lot, and you might be running from another source.
Well, under our current law and under our current state aid structure, I do not see our legislature funding capital construction for public schools. I mean, it's a fair question. If you lived in Wyoming, and I did some work on school construction for the state of Wyoming a couple of years ago, Wyoming has coal, gas, and all kinds of stuff, and they pay for their, all the school buildings in that state. There are no bond issues. But you know, one of the disadvantages to that, and this is just an editorial aside, their school buildings for a while cost $300 a square foot, because there was no impetus by the local voters to restrain spending. I mean, in the end, it's you folks who are the deciders. Okay? And you decide if and what you're going to build, just like anything else that you purchase, but you're going to purchase it because you're going to pay the bond to finance. And that's a community decision that all communities have to make. I got, do I have two more? Two more? Yes, sir?
If you go to the merger, and if there was enough money in the five school districts' reserves, building a new building, you wouldn't have to have a bond issue.
Yes, that is absolutely correct.
And then it would never go to the...
It would never go to the vote of the people. Is that correct? That's correct, yeah. You can, in other words, if you had enough building fund money, everybody understand the question? If you have enough money in your building fund, the board can vote to spend the building fund money to build buildings. Okay? Last question?
What is the way that a decision can be made as to whether it'll be election or whether it'll be petition?
Well, in the end... Pardon me? In the end, the community can work through their boards of education to indicate their wishes, but the boards of education would be the ones who make that determination. The only other way to do it is to circulate a petition. I mean, all y'all can circulate a petition. I did a reorganization that way once. But for all practical purposes, election method reorganization plan or a petition method reorganization plan, that determination is going to be made by the boards of education. Well, folks, you've been great. If you have any other questions that you didn't get a chance to, or that you want to articulate and write, give them to your local superintendent, and I'll try to answer them as best I can. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here, on behalf of the boards of education for attending. The boards do need to close their meetings and adjourn, and so we will allow you to do that, and we'll start with Osman.
Osman, meeting is adjourned.
Do we have a vote for adjournment for the Craig Board? Pauline, Stacy seconded, all in favor? Okay. Wausau Board is adjourned at 9:20.
Woodville Board is adjourned at 9:21.
Hanyu Board is adjourned at 9:22.